Welcome to this, the regular meeting of the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin. It is Monday, December 16th. I welcome those that are here in the gallery, as well as those that are joining us virtually. For those that are here with us, if I could ask you to stand for the National Anthem, please. Thank you. The Municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty and was signed by the Weyandod and Anishapi Nations, including ancestors of Chipewas, of the Thames First Nation. It is the traditional territory of the Hottasani, Atawandurank, and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters and the Municipality of Central Elgin. Council, any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I have a disclosure of pecuniary interest related to CEP 4224. I have a financial relationship with one of the applicants, and I think that's all I need to say, is it? Okay, perfect. Adoption of meetings by previous, or the adoption of the minutes. Can I get a mover in a second, or please? Counselor Connors, Counselor Griffin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that the minutes for the regular meeting of council dated Monday, November 25th, 2024, be adopted.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Next, we have a delegation. I'd like to welcome Brent Barr from the Port Stanley Village Association and the other members who have joined with him this evening. Thank you for your interest. Please come forward. And, Mr. Barr, if you could just press the button, you will be live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Port Stanley Village Association. So, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Counsel, thank you very much for allowing me to come in and speak to you today about the information that I want to provide. I do know you got the packages accordingly, but I felt that it'd be nice to be able to provide you with a personal example of what happened, but also give you the opportunity to ask any questions that may be worthwhile. And I want to also say, on behalf of the Port Stanley Village Association, or PSVA, how pleased I was with the amount of work and effort that was done in this research to bring this information to all stakeholders involved. It was a tremendous amount of effort and certainly provided a great insight into what's happening in our community. What you're going to see, and I guess I'm going to say next slide, is that possible? Thanks so much, appreciate it. I just thought I'd take two seconds to kind of describe the Port Stanley Village Association to you, in case you maybe know about it, but not really sure what's going on. But those of you that were at the presentation October 24th, I apologize, some of this will be a repeat. But we have a saying, which is be informed, be active, and be heard. And the importance of that to us is, our goal as an association is to inform our residents and members of our association what's happening within the community and might impact them. We want them to be active within the community, doing the things that they need to, to help bring things forward. And of course, one of the most important things is to allow their voice to be heard to all the stakeholders. That, of course, includes the municipality, but also includes groups like the BIA, optimists, related service clubs, and with our community. So you'll notice that there are a series of six committees we have. Two I've highlighted specifically. The first one, access, inclusion, and age and place, which we've merged those together. They kind of do everything from, you know, I can say birth to unfortunately passing away. But the idea, one of the projects you may see if you drive into Port Stanley, is a beautification of the skate park right near the ball diamond as you come in. That was an initiative they wanted to take on to make it even look more appropriate to our community. They are working on access for mats and wheelchairs that can go into the water at Little Beach, as another example. Another one that I know you guys would be very familiar with is our Environmental Impact Committee. I've got a couple of members with me today, and they worked on the 200 trees for 200 years, and have had tremendous luck. And I want to thank Council very much for the support in that project in the past. As we look at all of these committees, they are designed to help our community. And so the other thing, if you want to go to the next slide, is we decided to do, a number of years ago, some research to understand what was important to the community. And so we continued with that research this year, so we're going to try to do it every two to three years. Again, in line with the be informed, be active, and be heard, we wanted to make sure we heard what our community is saying on a regular basis. The first one in 2022 was a member-driven qualitative research. The one that we completed now is quantitative, which means it's statistically valid and has been proven to be such. The goal here is to help all stakeholders involved, and as I said, not just the municipality, but also help all of those service clubs and organizations within our community be able to actively see how they might be able to get more involved. As we move into the next slide, you'll see the top five initiatives. So we, in the research, came up with 34 things that we then quantified, and these were the top five of that, and I felt that they were probably, we're actually going to do the top 10 with you, but the top five. First one was improve the facilities at Little Beach. The number one ended up getting 151 responses of the 400 that we ended up having in total. Number two, the improved geese population management, so managing the geese's population within all the parks and along the walkways within the community. Number three is preserving our downtown core through effective urban planning and design guidelines. Number four is to implement no swimming area near the pier, which of course, unfortunately, I'm sure everybody here is aware of the passing of that young man back through the summer. And so there, apparently, and I'm understanding that Council's already moving forward with some of the projects around that, so we're very excited to see that come into place. And number five was to build a bandshell and/or related music venues in our community. With the next slide, you'll see the next, you see the top five there, but also then the other six. Building sidewalks and street lighting along George Street, west of William. Birm implementation as per the Harbour Master Plan, so kind of what's the plan to move those things forward? Number eight is continued cleanup and management of our river that runs through our area. Number nine, of course, is to build a community or expand our community center or services offered for recreation. And number 10 is to improve the traffic flow specifically at Bridge and Carlisle, which, if you know that, that's where the Legion and the LCBO is in Port Stanley. So the top 10 were all very important, and they all dealt with things like managed development, environmental efforts, use of community spaces, and infrastructure and safety. And it was very clear, if you look at even the responses, so even number 10 had 105 responses for that one. So these were statistically valid. I can tell you from doing research throughout my life, in previous lives, anything, when you get 100 surveys completed, you have statistical validity 19 times out of 20. We have these having over 100 responses, and this is just part of the research. When we had 400 responses, we certainly have statistical validity. If you want to go to the next slide for me. I am not going to go through all these for you, but I thought it was important to see the remaining. So here we've got the top 10, then you see 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and that is an area where you, I'm going to bring them back in a couple of seconds. And then I've got 16, 17, and if you flip over, you'll see, of course, it going all the way up to number 34. The idea here is, we pulled the top 34 ideas from 3,500 data points in the first phase of the research. I would say that number 34 is important to the community, it's just not as important as the ones that scored higher. So it's not that I want to ignore those, and I'm not, I'm going to say that the Port Stanley Village Association is not going to ignore those as we work within our community, but I wanted to make sure that I emphasize what was tremendously important to our community in priority orientation. You go to the next slide for me, you'll see that we broke this down into timelines, kind of a very short-term timeline, midterm, long-term, and then what we call annual or annually ongoing. As we go to the next slide, you're going to see the short-term one is really three major things. Improve the geese population, preserve our downtown core through the urban guidelines, and the no swimming beach signs within our main beach. These are things that we know could be done fairly quickly and fairly inexpensively. And actually, in fact, I am aware, in case of number two, the geese management, that Colleen, who is our wildlife expert, kind of de facto, and whatever she does with her forever wild group, it's impressive because she's already been able to get funding from outside sources to help fund that within our community. So this is the idea of what I mean by stakeholder. It isn't about coming to council and saying, "We'd like money." It's about trying to bring this to council to get your support, so we have other individuals that might be able to support it. You go to the next one, it's kind of a medium term. This involves the sidewalks along George Street, the improved traffic flow at Bridge and Carlisle, the idea of increased diverse medical offerings within our community, implementing public transportation between St. Thomas and Port Stanley, that was number 14. And number 15, I said in the top 15, if you come back, traffic flow at George and William Streets, that intersection just before, we're asking for the lights to go on. And if you go to the last slide, or I guess the second last one, for long-term initiatives involved, this is where things like the Little Beach come in and the facility on Little Beach for our washrooms, the bandshell, implementation of the Harbour Master Plan, the idea of the community center, and lastly, the bike lanes within our community, which is number 12. Again, our hope is that these things will be on your radar screen, especially if you go into budget discussions and deliberations over the coming months. The last slide of this grouping is a thing called ongoing initiatives, and that includes the harbour cleanup and our, I guess we'll call it a more diverse business downtown, and looking for ways that we can work with the BIA to help bring that to fruition. If you go to the next slide for me, just, the next one is about the methodology, and I thought this would be important for you to understand, because, number one, I want to offer to any and all the municipality associations, we'll call it, within Central Elgin, if they want to have a conversation with us, we'd be happy to have that conversation, tell them how we did this, share the research with them, and share the knowledge so they can actually redo it within their own communities. But the idea is, as I said, phase one had 406 responses, phase two had 400 responses. So we had 806 people in total respond over a period of about six weeks to our surveys, which I think, from my past life, and I think when you guys have done research, fairly strong response level within our community. We use what's called a convenience sample versus a random sample. If you don't know what the difference is, a random sample would be picking up a phone and just dialing a phone number, that's random. Convenience means we pick people who lived within our community and reached out to various, through Facebook, through our membership group, but also through local stakeholders that had access to distribution emails and those kind of things. But the reliability, which is really important to me, as I said, the gold standard is 100 completed surveys. We had over 400 surveys in the first one and 400 in the second one, so at least from a statistical validity perspective, we can take these results as being very strong. The last slide I want to talk about is the next steps. So, number one, doing what exactly what I'm doing here right now, is sharing with you the results, and I'm going to share that with the BIA, I'm sharing that with all the various other stakeholders within Port Stanley and area. Our goal is to be able to be available to answer their questions and be able to help them understand the information that's come. Number two, for us specifically, is to take this into all of our planning purposes for the next three years, and make sure that we are focused on that within our committees to make sure we are pushing forward the initiatives that our community wants to see. And the last one, as I've already mentioned, within the CE communities, we'd be honored to be able to provide that information to any other community that wants to have it. I would be honored to be able to come on behalf of the Port Stanley Village Association and do this. We are all volunteers, at the end of the day, but we are passionate about what we're doing here, and my hope is that other people that you represent might be passionate within their own communities and want to maybe do something of very similar nature. The end of the day, this information only helps you, as the municipality and our council, do what you need to do in a better way. If you have information from each one of those communities, it allows you to understand what's important to those residents, and I think that would make a difference. We know, for sake of argument, that our number one thing was the washrooms at Little Beach, not a debate. I know that there was a vote at council a couple of weeks ago, and I understand, you guys have so many priorities going on, I can't imagine being able to vote all the things that you do. All I ask is, given that you know that it is our number one priority, that as you go into your budget process, that you at least consider it. We're not expecting you to do it tomorrow, but we'd at least like it on the radar screen as an example, or any of those ideas in the top 10. Our goal here is to share information, and again, I would be happy to sit down with any one of you and be able to share that information, or any one of your communities and share that information. But our goal here is to simply continue moving things forward for Port Stanley. I'm very honored to be the president of the Port Stanley Village Association, have an incredible group of people that are doing all this kind of work for us on a volunteer basis, and I'm just honored to be able to bring it here and be able to provide it to you at this point in time. I've taken a lot of your time, and so I apologize for that, but if there's any questions that you might have at this point in time, I'd be very interested to be able to answer them for you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that, Mr. Barr. It was a first-class report. I know that two of the counselors, myself, were there the night it was released, or it was introduced to the community. I couldn't agree more with the need for improvements, I couldn't agree more. As I said to the three, or I don't know, maybe 30 people that emailed me about Little Beach, that just like you folks need to be informed, be active, and be heard, I think we need to be informed, I think we need to be diligent, and I think we need to be strategic. And I see a solution involving all council, all staff, and being one that we put our minds to. So, very appreciative that you are here tonight, taking this to the next step. I think that the budget process, we have our new treasurer, obviously, with a keen eye to the process, which will begin immediately after Christmas, and I'm looking forward to finding an opportunity to achieve some of the solutions that your group is looking for. As you say, I liked that you broke them down on very many different matrix, one with not costing a lot versus longer term and shorter term. We met in the summer and had some discussions about how, you know, the PSVA works, and the first thing I thought of was, we'd like to branch you out to other communities and see if you could help them with some of your best practices, but maybe that's for a longer term. So I want to say that I appreciate you being here, and as I wrote to the folks, that it was an opportunity for us and the council to hear more about it, and I think that there's a tremendous amount of excitement about what we have the opportunity to do in 2025. Any other counselors wish to make any comments while we have Mr. Barr here? Saying none. Again, I thank you for your time, and we look forward to continued communication in the new year.
Thank you very much for all of you for your time.
Moving forward for correspondence, requiring action, SE 2524, suspension events application, welcome summer marketplace. Could I have a mover in a second, or please? Counselor Bachman, Counselor Griffin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that the special events permit be approved for the welcome summer marketplace event to be held on the berm in Port Stanley on June 28th, 2025, subject to the conditions as outlined.
Thank you. Counselor Graham, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair, through to Infrastructure, our Director of Infrastructure. I just want to make sure, because we had been denied, as Port Stanley 200, we had been denied on two different occasions for having tents on the berm, so I know we've spoken about it, but I want it to be a matter of public knowledge that there's going to be a system in place whereby there'd be no piercing of the ground based on what Mr. Brooks has told us in the past, that tent pegs cannot go up. So, Mr. Brooks, if you can just speak briefly to that, please.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, please.
Through you, Mayor Sloan, to the counselor. The certificate of property use for the berm does not allow grant or ground penetrating stakes to be placed in the ground. So that was brought up during the Special Events Committee, and staff had worked with the proponent that is looking to set up the market on the berm, and they've come up with an alternate solution in which they would utilize cinder blocks or concrete blocks to hold the tents in place. So, so long as they're able to utilize another method of holding the tents down without putting in ground penetrating stakes, staff support the event.
Thank you.
Or the use of tents.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Graham, follow-up? Any other counselors? Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Seeing none, if I could get all those in favor. Opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. HCE 0224, Quaker Meeting House, Heritage Designation. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Watson, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that heritage designation of the Quaker Meeting House, 6387 Quaker Road in Sparta, as requested by the owner, Yarmouth Monthly Meeting of the Society of Friends, and recommended by Heritage Central Elgin, be approved and apply to the aspects as outlined.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. HCE 0324, 2025, Heritage Central Elgin, Public Representative Appointments. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Griffin, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the proposed list of public representatives to Heritage Central Elgin and the committee executive for the 2025 term be approved as outlined, and that the requested Heritage Central Elgin budget of $6,745 for 2025 be approved for inclusion in the proposed 2025 municipal budget.
Questions or comments? Counselor Graham, are you on the committee? Okay. I just didn't see your name there, so I wasn't, as a counselor, you fall under a different category? Well, thank you for being that. And any other questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Elgin OPP Detachment Board, a letter from yours truly, who is as chair of the detachment board with a request for $5,000 contribution. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Connors, Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Watson, that a contribution of $5,000 for essential operating costs of the Elgin OPP Detachment Board be approved and funded from the 2025 tax levy.
Can I answer any questions or comments from council about the $5,000? Counselor Watson.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Do all the other municipalities pay about the same amount?
I know that it's misheard. Is it approximately the same, or are we a little more?
Through you, worship to Counselor Watson, I believe it is somewhat the same. I can confirm that and provide you with that information at a later time.
Everyone pays, so we can, we'll get you that information, but I think we're about the same as our contributions, depending on our size, but they're all within certain, but I should have had that number out, and I'll get it for you. Counselor Griffin?
Thanks. I did wonder, with this being described as a need because of transition right now, is this something where once the budget is better established and everything's in order, this is considered sort of money paid forward? Okay, so it's not like it's money that's in addition to what we would already pay?
Misheard?
Through Counselor Griffin, or sorry, through yourself, sir, to Counselor Griffin, yes, as outlined, this money, $5,000, will go towards our full bill for 2025.
Okay. If I could get, I guess I can call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. Mover in a second, or for the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, appointment of Carleen Green, Counselor Bachman, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the appointment of Carleen Green to the Elgin, Central Elgin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee be supported for the remainder of the 2023 to 2026 term.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. Number six, Kate Devanna Estate Winery, Alcohol and Gaming Corporation of Ontario, application. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Griffin, Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin support the application made by Kate Devanna Estate Winery to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario for manufacturer-by-the-glass endorsement winery and their file number as outlined.
All those in favor? Oh, first of all, questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Petitions, speeding concerns on Centennial Road. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Watson, Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that the County of Elgin be requested to investigate speeding concerns along Centennial Road between Elm Street and Southdale Line, and that the County of Elgin be requested to place the portable speed signs along that section of Centennial Road as a traffic calming measure until the investigation is completed.
So, as background counsel, I had a conversation, Trish Connor was in touch and spoke with Delaney and I about this. They've spoken to the City of St. Thomas, they've spoken to the OPP. We're hoping to give them some support as a council to show that we understand their concerns. Are there any questions or comments about this petition? Counselor Connors, please.
Yes, through you, Mayor. Will this, I'll probably direct this to Mr. Brooks, will this constitute having speed clocked on the street, et cetera, and the 85th percentile and all that, again, as it has been on McBain, as it has been in different places in Lynnhurst?
Mr. Brooks, please.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. This study would be undertaken by the county, so it would likely involve traffic counters, measuring traffic speeds, and, you know, whether or not traffic calming devices would be installed would be subject to the results of that study and the parameters set out by the county.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Receive for information, Heritage Central Elgin Meeting Minutes. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Watson, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the Heritage Central Elgin meeting minutes for November 24th, 2024, be received for information.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Our first report this evening, Central Elgin Planning Office, CEP 4124, consent application for 4799 Hawkcliff Road. Ms. Cheryl Berengrath, we have a question, can I get a mover in a second, or first of all? Counselor Watson, Counselor Griffin?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that consent application E425, my apologies, be approved, subject to the conditions as outlined, and that such support be provided to the County of Elgin's Land Division Committee for consideration.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. CEP 4224, application to amend the township, oh, sorry, I'm going to have to vacate the chair. I will ask Counselor Graham to take over.
CEP 4224, application to amend township Yarmouth bylaw 1998, 44828 Fruit Ridge Line, Jeff John and Joanne Ferguson. Can I have a mover in a second, or please? Counselor Griffin, Counselor Connors, any questions or comments? Mr. McClure, do you have any comments for us at all?
No, Counselor Graham, essentially, this is a, I guess, a condition of surplus farm severance that was approved by the county and supported by the county and staff.
Thank you. Ms. Leach, can you read the motion, please?
Counselor Graham, the motion reads, move by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that a site-specific draft amendment to the township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw be prepared to satisfy conditions of a resident surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at 44828 Fruit Ridge Line, which may be legally described as concession 8, north part of Lot 21, Municipality of Central Elgin, and that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with legislated requirements.
All those in favor? Carries.
Next, we have the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, ICS 2824, the SCADA system upgrades. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Watson, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the SCADA system upgrades be sole sourced to Actinium Summa Engineering, and that the work plan submitted by Actinium Summa Engineering for the upgrades to the SCADA system and the amount of $717,100 plus HST be approved and funded from the water and wastewater rates as per the 2024 capital budget.
Questions or comments from council? Counselor Watson.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. To Mr. Brooks, what do we get for 717,000 besides, what is it, software upgrades? What else is involved with this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. This project will essentially replace hardware, PLCs, and software that are utilized at each of our water and wastewater sites. And it's all proprietary software that's delivered specifically through this vendor. There are other vendors out there. However, being that we already have some infrastructure in place through this vendor that we do not have to replace, it's cheaper to go ahead and just utilize this vendor to purchase all that equipment and software.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Posed, and that's carried. ICS 63324, an application for exemption to the noise bylaw from the St. Thomas Gun Club. Mover and a second or Deputy Mayor, Counselor Griffin?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that an exemption to bylaw number 212, being a bylaw to control noise in the Municipality of Central Elgin as amended, be granted to allow the St. Thomas Gun Club to hold their winter trap shooting event taking place on January 26, 2025.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed, and that's carried. ICS 6724 is the Union Area Servicing Environment Assessment Addendum. Mover and a second or Deputy Mayor, Counselor Griffin. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that the updated servicing solution to provide sanitary sewer services to Union with a phased approach, as shown as Alternative A3 in the Environmental Assessment Addendum Report, be endorsed.
Questions, comments from counsel? All those in favor? Posed, carried. ICS 6924, consent agreement, 45624, new serum line. Mover and a second or please. Counselor Bachman, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the mayor and deputy clerk be authorized to sign the consent agreement for 46254, new serum line.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Posed, and that's carried. ICS 7124, ICS 7024, reaccreditation audit results. Mover and a second or please. Counselor Connors, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the reaccreditation audit from Intertech SAI Global be received for information.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Posed, carried. ICS 67124, Ontario Building Code Update. Mover and a second or please. Counselor Griffin, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report ICS 7124 regarding Ontario Building Code Updates be received for information.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Posed, that's carried. ICS 7224, application for exemption to the noise bylaw number 212. As amended, Mamawet, Canada Eastern. Mover and a second or please. Counselor Griffin, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that an exemption to bylaw number 212, being a bylaw to control noise in the Municipality of Central Elgin as amended, be granted to allow Etbo Tool &amp; Die and Mamawet, Canada Eastern, to discharge and disassemble a press machine in Port Stanley on December 18, 2024.
Thank you. I guess my comment is, we got the information this morning from Monica. The question, any questions from counsel? We have a 140-foot barge coming into Port Stanley, which is being publicized in the next couple of days. It's kind of an interesting story. They are having machinery shipped from somewhere in Europe, which went to the port of Montreal, the port of Hamilton, and for ease of access, they are bringing it into the port of Port Stanley. This is, I think, an interesting, an opportunity. The harbor, as we look to, you know, continue to dredge it and make it available for boats, it's nice to have some use. It will be happening overnight at a time in December when it's not too busy. I don't think we have to worry about tourists that much. However, I do think that we should understand that there is a certain fee that was paid by this company, and we'll have to think about that as a council about how we, how we use that towards maybe some going forward in the future. But what we're asking for now is to make ease of access is with this noise bylaw to help the folks in Central Elgin, or sorry, in Port Stanley, give us the opportunity or give the company the opportunity to load all night. Is that correct, Jeff? Overnight, I think it is. Mr. Brooks?
No, the unloading will actually take place during the day, and it's expected that the unloading process will be completed in the early evening. However, there is a chance that it could run a few hours past our noise exemption, our noise bylaw exemption says it can run. So this is just a small extension to allow them to work until approximately 11:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I, for some reason, thought at the start, the team, thanks to Jeff and Mike and everyone that's worked with this. I know it's taken a lot of time. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Posed, and that's carried. Director of Financial Services, DFS 2124, bylaw for the 2025 interim tax levy. Mover and a second or Deputy Mayor, Counselor Graham, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Graham, that the by, that the draft bylaw to provide for a 2025 interim tax levy be approved, and that staff be authorized to implement the interim levy over two equal installments due February 26 and May 28 of 2025.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for our Director of Finance, Treasurer? Relatively straightforward, seeing none. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Thank you. DFS 2224, Finance Committee Establishment and Terms of Reference. Mover and a second or please. Deputy, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that a finance committee be established and the terms of reference be adopted as attached as Schedule A to Staff Report DFS 2224, and that the following, and that members of council be appointed to serve on the finance committee.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Do I have any volunteers? Counselor Graham? Oh, first, can I, okay, go ahead. Counselor Watson, questions?
Well, through you, Mayor. Like, so, don't we have budget committees? Or how, what, can you explain this committee a little bit more to me?
Sure. Do you want me to defer to you, Miss Heard, or Mr. David? Mr. David? Jan Soon. I was going to say Janess, but I apologize. I, Jan Soon. Mr. Jan Soon?
Through you, Mayor Sloan. We're suggesting that a committee be constructed to really represent council in the budget deliberations, and perhaps even going forward past budget.
Further questions? Counselor Watson?
Comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll put my name in. If I get to work with Dave, that'd be fun.
Okay. So, Counselor Graham? Counselor Watson? Counselor Bachman? Is that your hand up there, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I'm just asking here about having four members. Okay. All right, so I have four names forward for three slots. Is that how we're going to go forward? I have four names. So we have to vote. In reverse order, can I, all those in favor of the Deputy Mayor? All those in favor of Counselor Bachman? All those in favor of Counselor Watson? All those in favor of Counselor Graham? So, we have four for three spots. Miss Heard, how does this work?
It's entirely up to council. How, I mean, as this is your own committee, I would recommend that council either consider extending the membership to four members, as the mayor is the next officio. That would make five members of council. Or the option is if one of the members who has expressed interest wants to reconsider their involvement with the committee, or council can decide amongst themselves.
Counselor Griffin, please.
I guess for a suggestion, I believe that both Counselors Bachman and Watson expressed interest last year, and Counselor Graham and I sat on. So what if we gave, neither of them sits many boards as it is, maybe if they both took a place, and then we sort of discussed further on what that third seat would be?
Counselor Graham?
I think we should go by a voting system rather than doing that.
Suggestion, Counselor Graham, on how we would do that? Do we have?
Call a revote and just count the votes? I don't know.
Can I have a revote? Counselor Bachman?
I would make the suggestion I would just go to four. I don't see a problem with another voice. The more voices heard at finance, the better. That way we get a more cross-section of what's going on from ward to ward to ward.
Okay. Counselor Watson?
Yes, through you, Mayor. I like that idea as well. And maybe we can't make all the meetings anyways, so, but we're going to have people there anyhow. So four, I'm good with that.
We had an issue just a minute ago that with quorum, was that not brought forward by this side?
But our CIO said that we could extend it to four. So is there some ways around it?
So my question is, if we have four, what would be the implications of that if the mayor's not planning on attending it for votes and things? It can be a tie, obviously, right? Or quorum would be, what, three people have to show up versus?
Well, of counsel? Deputy Mayor, any comments there? Are you listening? You're okay?
Yeah, I don't have a comment. It's always tricky when we have ties, as the mayor and I know from county. So, yeah, I don't know how we fix that if we can't go forward with four, or we vote again, or I'm not really sure.
All those, all those in favor of having four on the committee? Okay, so that fails. That's fine. Sure. Okay, does that make everybody happy? So we'll have five? And can I ask the clerk, deputy clerk, or I guess Miss Heard, a question? As opposed to being ex officio, is there any difference in me saying I'm part of the committee? There is? Okay, so I'm part of the committee. Thanks, counselors. Okay, you have to take a vote on it. Counselor Griffin has a question.
In terms of the scheduling and the decision-making and so forth, if we're moving all the way up to five members, and this is stated to be looking for consensus, which means we're ideally looking for majorities on decisions, does there not come a point where we almost might as well then have it be a council thing? Like, it feels like then what's going to happen is you bring decisions back to council with a majority that's certainly exceeding quorum, having already discussed issues at length and having a recommendation about them, and you have to schedule around five members of council. Like, really, there comes a point where if we have a consistent scheduled council night, we almost might as well just bring those decisions to council then.
Well, we've gone from three to five, and now we're questioning maybe back to three again. Why don't I ask one of the, I appreciate your comments, Counselor Griffin. Does one of the council, does one of the five of the finance committee want to either respond to that or make a move that we accept it as five? What would the council like to do? I'm open to ideas. Heard from Counselor Griffin, heard from some others. I'm offering to put in for five, but I think Counselor Griffin might be worried I'm working too hard. Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mayor. I guess the challenge is, is as we get more people on this committee, it's harder to book those meetings. And then it's also a little harder to sift through all the stuff that we're doing. I think the idea is to somewhat streamline that whole procedure and then bring back recommendations to council. So if we're doing it as a council all together, it slows down that whole process. And I guess that's what I would caution council against is slowing down the process.
Counselor Connors?
Through you, Mayor. So one of the reasons I did not volunteer is I'm very busy outside of this. So, you know, bringing all of council in on the decision would just be more difficult for me. So that's why I did not put my hand up.
Okay. Do I have support for having five people on the committee? Maybe that's, can we try that one? So can I ask, I can ask for, if I have support for five people on the, on the finance committee? All those in favor? Carried. Well. Mr. Jansen, we were all, you've, it's never been this popular before, and I just want to let you know, we are, your involvement and joining the team here has got us all excited. So thank you for that, and I think we all look forward to working with you. DFS 2324, 2023 Development Charges Annual Continuity Statement. A mover and a second or please. Counselor Bachman, thank you. Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report DFS 2324 regarding the 2023 Development Charges Annual Continuity Statement be received for information.
Questions? All those in favor? Posed, and that carries. Thank you. Can I get a mover and a second for the bylaws? 384 George Street, 2025 interim tax levy and the execute the consent agreement on new serum line. Counselor Watson, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaws 2942, 2944, and 2945 be read a first time and passed.
All those in favor? Posed, and that's carried. Other business? Counselors, can I ask if there's any other business from counsel? I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome our new communications manager, Monica Pinetta. She started with the municipality on December 2. Monica is here in the gallery. She is an experienced communications professional with over 10 years of progressive experience in strategic communications, public engagement, and media relations across both private and public sector. Monica joins us from the city of London, where most recently she was manager of Media Relations, Brand and Reputation. In her role, she managed the city's media relations efforts, developed communication strategies to engage residents, and enhance public awareness of municipal programs and services. Counsel, I said, Jess, and hope you will join me in welcoming Monica to the team, but also to reach out to her and see if there's anything that you'd like to work with her on. Monica, on behalf of counsel, we look forward to working with you. If I could get a mover, thank you. If I can get a mover and a second to proceed into close, please. Counselor Connors, Counselor Griffin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that council proceed into closed session at 7:50 p.m. in order to address the matter pertaining to a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality, and a proposed acquisition of land by the municipality.
All those in favor? Opposed? We're in closed session, and I'll take a five-minute